To order, get the meeting started. To get started, I'd like to bring up Reverend Matt McCollum with Trinity Presbyterian Church to say the opening prayer. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. God will give you thanks for those who long ago declared that life and liberty are your gifts to all people. Help us to continue that work this day in our own community as we seek justice and righteousness, as we seek to protect those who are vulnerable, as we seek the goodwill of all. Will we give you thanks for our mayor and city council, for our first responders, our police officers and firefighters, for all our city employees? Would you prosper the work of their hand? Thank you for your love for us and goodness to us in Christ. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, council. Item number one is the approval of the minutes from the September 11th regular city council meeting and the work session.
May we submit those minutes? Approved those minutes as submitted, please.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item two is the mayor's report.
I'm going to try to do this without my teeth chattering, because I'm freezing to death tonight. So first, I want to just recognize Fairhope High School and SGA and for everybody who made the homecoming parade and the football game possible. The parade and the bonfire were fantastic. It was a great community event and just really appreciate all the time and effort that went into that. I know that Councilman Conyers, his daughter, A.B., is president of SGA plus the homecoming queen. Congratulations, but she did a lot of work this week. I had texted with John Cardwell, the principal of the high school, congratulated him on a listing that came out, you know, with Fairhope High School, this is number 14 on a ranking, and said, you know, "I know that last week was tiring for you," and he made the comment back that A.B. should be the one that's really tired because she worked tirelessly on that event. So we really appreciate her and what she did for the community. The other thing I want to do is thank Kim Creach and her staff for the budget. You saw the budget presentation during workshop, during the work session. You know that that does not go without a lot of time and effort put in and really appreciate all the department heads, but Kim's team in particular and her for what they do. Thank you to the council for the time that you've taken to review the agenda with staff, to review the budget with staff and to come to extra meetings and to really do your due diligence and appreciate, again, you considering that tonight. Also, I want to let everybody know that the mural, at least the one in the Arts Alleyway, is almost complete. That's the one there on the elevator shaft as you enter Arts Alley from Section Street. It's beautiful. Hannah has done a great job and hope everybody will go by and take a look at it. It's just almost finished, I think. She's got some finishing touches to put on that. And tonight, we're also going to recognize the junior city council, so I'm going to ask them to come and line up behind me. They're going to all come to the mic and tell their name, tell which grade they're in and what school they represented. I will tell you that junior city council is something that has really evolved over the past couple of years. We have, we've kind of challenged them each year to do more and to be better and to come up with new ideas of things, how they want to participate with the city. So Paige has been organizing their efforts and they have just been doing a great job. It's hard to make the selection because there's so many talented students throughout our schools here in Fairhope and just really appreciate them wanting to give their time back to the community and learn more about what we do here in Fairhope. So now I'm going to turn over the mic to them.
I'm Will Garner. I'm a junior at Fairhope High School.
My name is Mary Frances Collins and I go to Bayside Academy and I'm a senior.
I'm Jillian Nichols and I'm a junior at Fairhope High School.
My name's Jenna Cowell. I'm a junior at Fairhope High School.
My name is Tucker Gooden. I'm a senior at Fairhope High School.
And Tucker is also a national merit?
I am not.
No, thirty-six on the A's. Thirty-six on the A's. Four six, just a perfect, right?
Just a perfect score, that's it. Just a perfect.
Wasn't that right, you're four six at the Fairhope?
Yes, ma'am.
Four or five, so far.
I'm Erin Fauch. I'm a sophomore at Fairhope High School.
I'm Addison Spears and I'm a senior at Fairhope High School.
I'm Grant Kelly and I'm a sophomore at Bay Shore.
So this is not the last time you'll see these students. They will be back. One of the things that they're going to have to do this year is they're going to attend committee meetings and also a couple city council meetings. So they will come up at those meetings under my comments and tell a little bit more about themselves, why they want to get involved. And also, you'll see them making presentations to the city council as well. So you'll also see a miniature committee meeting. So excited to have them and just looking forward to great things this year. Thank y'all again for being here. Can I have them come up there and we'll get a picture of them behind all of y'all?
Absolutely.
Okay, y'all come on up. Thank you.
Y'all come on, spread out. We'll mix in with each other.
Just fill in.
Find some empty space so we can see your faces.
Yeah, yeah. Don't hide behind them. Come on up there. Absolutely. There you go.
Okay. All right, everybody look over here. One, two, three. Got it.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Mayor, did you have any other? Item number three is public participation for agenda items. So if you have anything on items five through eighteen, now is your opportunity to speak. All right, seeing no one, I will close public participation for agenda items and go to council comments. Councilman Burrell.
No comments.
Councilman Martin.
Well, I'm going to kind of piggyback on the mayor. I took my family down to the, to the Hoco. I learned that word, by the way. I didn't know Hoco. I was like, what the heck is a Hoco? Anyway, I took my family down to the Hoco. I tell you, that bonfire was hot. Like, it was hot, man. Like, did you go?
I did not.
Jimmy was there. That bonfire, we're going to have to get it cooler next year for that bonfire because...
I always backed up.
I mean, dude, no. It was hot.
That's all I have to say. Councilman Conyers?
I'll just say huge kudos to the city on the, on the parade and the bonfire and the high school. I mean, that was a fantastic event and the community really stepped up and, and supported the school. Also, to the junior city council members, I know, I saw eight up here. I know Josie Lynn was missing. Are there nine or 10 total?
They're all in.
Ten total? Okay. Ten missing, okay.
And I just, you know, great group of kids and like seeing that they're representing multiple schools and, I mean, I see some faces that I've known since probably before kindergarten up there and they've just been outstanding students the whole, the whole way through. So glad to see they're engaged and involved and hope they get a lot out of it this year. That's it.
Councilman B.
It's always enjoyable to see the youth of America getting involved in the political scene and seeing how it runs and the operations of it. So it's always good to see that.
I agree completely and I will say, even though I was not able to attend the homecoming parade, I have gotten reports from, I feel like dozens of people that said what an amazing thing it was and what a great job they did. And so I'm really happy to hear that. I know it's been a couple of years since we've had that, right?
Five or six years.
Yeah, five or six years. So it looked like everybody was happy to have it back and, and it was a great turnout. And so I'm happy that things went well. And with that, I will close council comments and go to final adoption. An ordinance to require annexation for property outside the city limits but contiguous to the city limits for new connection to the city of Fairhope's water system. This was introduced August 29th. You know, council, we talked about this briefly last meeting. I think we were concerned when we first proposed it or introduced it that there were some changes that need to be made and fortunately, we still hadn't made those changes. So, so I think at this point, absent a change of heart by council, I think it's probably appropriate at this point to postpone it indefinitely so that we can not have to keep putting it on the agenda until we're ready to, to make the changes required to move forward.
Yeah, and I think we got to do a better job. We need to get our questions to Chris or to the mayor, to the, Chris or to the mayor so we can kind of kick, quit kicking this can down the road and answer all the questions. I mean, it's not something we need to rush into, but we definitely need to do our better, a little bit more due diligence on getting the answers so we can make a decision on this. But I, I make a motion to postpone this particular ordinance indefinitely until we get those questions into the, and answers from the, our legal and the mayor.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to postpone. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Yeah, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item five is postponed indefinitely. Item six is an ordinance, an annexation for utility board of the city of Foley, DBA Riviera Utilities and the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation, property located on Gayford Road Extension, Fairhope, Alabama.
I'll introduce ordinance.
All right. All right, thank you. Who wants to discuss item number six?
Thank you, council. This is a straight annexation, no zoning case related to it, like a conditional annexation we typically see. So this will be coming in as R1. We do have an application. Any utilities approved under our zoning ordinance, regardless of the underlying district, goes to the Board of Adjustment. We just did that for our own electric department did that recently. I will say Riviera's way ahead of this. We've been talking for quite some time about what is proposed, so how we kind of accommodate anything that may be around the property. But this is the first step. Once we get this, we can officially accept an annex, or a application to the Board of Adjustment.
Hunter, if I may, are we, can you, what, what utilities are we working with here? Electric?
At this time, this is just the annexation, but...
Oh, okay. Okay.
We'll, we'll review all those cases and when we get the application, if y'all have any question.
Okay. That's what I'm asking. Yeah, all right.
All right, council, any discussion questions for Hunter on item six? All right, hearing none. Absent a motion, we will let this lay over. Okay. Item seven is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1510, known as the Personnel Rules, Policies and Procedures Ordinance, Section 7, Time Off From Work, amending Section 7.04, Sick Leave Pay Upon Retirement, option to convert unused sick leave to retirement service.
I'll introduce the ordinance, please.
Thank you, Jack. Mayor, if you want to just tell us about this?
I can. We have, we discussed this in the past couple of meetings, but this is basically gives our employees an option when they get ready to retire, whether they want to convert their sick leave to service credit with RSA or we allow them to, to basically, we buy out 960 hours of their sick time. So they have, they will have either or option. If not, they can, you know, cash out 960 and then be able to convert 300 to service credit. You either have to choose the 960 or you, you put it all towards service credit. It's just another option for them.
Okay. Council, any questions for the mayor on item seven?
I have a question. Does this need immediate consideration, mayor? Is there any time limit? Okay.
Counsel, any additional questions on item number seven? All right, hearing none. We will let item seven lay over. Item eight is a resolution that the city of Fairhope elects to come under the provisions of Section 3626, 36.1 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, authorizing employees the option to convert unused sick leave to retirement service credit or taking one-time lump sum payment according to the City of Fairhope Personnel Rules, Policies and Procedures. So obviously, this is the resolution that piggybacks on the ordinance we just discussed.
It does, and this resolution has to go to RSA and then once the ordinance is passed, then that's kind of internal policy, but the resolution has to go to RSA, allowing the employees to have that option.
All right, council, I will entertain a motion for item number eight.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item nine is a resolution to authorize submission of pre-application for the FY 2024 Airport Improvement Program and Airport Infrastructure Grant Projects for Sunny Callahan Airport. Councilman Burrell told us in the work session, this is our annual appropriation. Is that correct, Jack?
Yeah, every year, you know, we submit our AIP Airport Improvement Project funding and so this is just a technicality, but if you do want to know a little more, I'd say that we're asking for funding to rehabilitate our runway and make it a little thicker and a little bit stronger. No, we're not going to be landing 737s on there. There's not plans for passenger service and all the other rumors you're going to read because we're trying to fix our runway and make it better.
Thank you, Jack. All right, council, I will entertain a motion to approve item number nine.
So moved. Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 10 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a new replacement roof for the Coyle Creek Cart Barn from Roof Doctors with a not to exceed amount of $22,000.
I think we did the maintenance barn.
Yeah, we did the maintenance barn last meeting and now we're doing the cart barn.
Make a motion, will you approve the resolution?
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve any further discussion. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement and installation of a new fire alarm control panel for the Civic Center from Hunter Security with a not to exceed amount of $11,494 and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute an installation agreement.
So moved. Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12 is a resolution that the city council hereby amends Resolution Number 3859-20 that established the pedestrian and bicycle committee for the city of Fairhope, Rules of Procedure Section C. The committee shall meet every other first Tuesday of the month at 4:00 PM at the Fairhope Museum of History. So guys, this is, this is only changing how often they meet from every month to every other month.
And it's going to begin January 2024.
Going to begin January 2024, correct. I'm sorry, Lisa, you did tell me that. All right, I will entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have one quick question for Lisa. Lisa, I assume no problem if something's going on at the Museum of History, they can change the location. I don't, I don't know if we had resolutions of other committees stating exactly where they meet, so...
Most of them do, but they say like at City Hall.
All right, thank you, Jack. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 13 is a resolution that the proposed FY 2023-2024 budget presented and reviewed this 25th day of September 2023 be hereby approved and adopted for the FY 2023-2024.
Make a motion, will you approve the passing of the budget? Second.
Got a motion and a second. Council, any further discussion?
Was the, was the clause in there authorizing the treasurer to move line items within a department's budget of 20,000 or less? Was that in last year's budget as well?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I'm going to tell you with this budget this year, I hope there's going to be some lively discussions when some of these expenditures come up, so just be prepared for that.
Fair, fair enough. Council, any further discussion on item 13? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 14 is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to expend impact fees for projects designated from the impact fee account for services for the police, fire, transportation and parks and recreation benefit areas. And this just goes hand in hand with the budget we just passed to transfer those funds over to be used.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 15 is a resolution that the city council approves and adopts the recommendations to fund new positions and approve pay grades, reclassify positions transfers, defund and delete positions as presented in the FY 2024 budget and in said resolution.
Make a motion, will you approve the resolution? Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, on this, I was looking at this earlier today, mayor. It's one, one position that I think we had a discussion about and I wasn't sure as I read the, the definitions or defining the different job positions, the gardener one and gardener two or the recreation urban forester. Is that our tree guy, arborist? Are we not, are we going to leave that? We're not trying to add that this year?
We're not. That's our park, that's for the, the triangle.
Okay, are we not going to try to add an arborist? No? A true arborist, okay.
All right, I still got a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 16 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves a selection of Krebs Engineering for Professional Services for Water Distribution System Capacity Expansion Project and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate a not to exceed fee to be approved by council. Council, as mayor discussed in work session, this is about expanding wells...
So moved. Second.
Wait a second.
Don't interrupt the president.
Now, y'all, now, y'all don't hurt my feelings now. Y'all go ahead. Y'all just, no. All right, but this is a well number, well expansion project, well one, well site one, is that right?
Actually, it's actually, it's multiple. It's, it's well site one, well site three. It's pilot boars for well expand, for well exploration and also for water distribution hydraulic model and to identify an area possible, for another possible water tank. So there's a lot to it, a lot in it.
See, y'all needed to know that.
She taught us that.
I know, I'm just reiterating. All right, we do have a, I think we had a motion and a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 17 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of one 2023 Toyota Tacoma truck or equivalent for the police department from Toyota of Montgomery with a not to exceed amount of $29,500.
Make a motion, will you approve Jimmy's future truck? Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have one question though on this.
Yeah.
Where's Chief?
She stepped out. She, she...
I don't know if anybody can answer this question. You know, if you buy like a, if you buy a Ford, you got that police interceptor motor. Does Toyota have a police package on this?
That I don't know.
You know, when we also, when we outfit these, they come with these prepackaged lights and everything else. I just, how does that play into a one-off?
I do not know.
I think it's pretty cool and it's a good price, but I'm curious more than anything. I think that...
I don't...
We don't know what we're buying, just buying a truck.
It's for the police department, but it's not...
I feel like I'm at home.
It's not for an officer.
Oh, it's not?
It's just not for an officer.
I got you.
We have like animal control or some other like animal or department.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, because we've got insurance money that we've got to spend that's going towards this. That's why we have...
All right, cool.
All right, I do have a motion and a second for item 17. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 18 is a request of Rita Danielle with Fairhope Sunset Rotary Club requesting permission for the use of city streets for a fundraising event that will benefit local charities on Saturday, January 13th, 2024 for the fifth annual .5K run in Fairhope from 2:30 PM to 3:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That's the one foot event right there.
Jack, have you won that one yet?
I have. I came in third last year. I stopped and got a Krispy Kreme, a salad with a sausage that I would have won.
In a full suit, I might add, right?
I was in a suit.
I thought so, I thought so.
That's one of the beer, y'all run to the beer stop, right?
All right, guys, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, item 19 is public participation for non-agenda items. So if you have anything to discuss, not on the agenda, now is your opportunity to speak. Come up to the mic, give us your name and address and you will have three minutes.
Sorry, I had two items that I forgot that I just wanted to recognize. This, last week, we celebrated Constitution Week and we did a proclamation for that. That was September 17th to the 23rd. And we also recognized New Era Missionary Baptist Church on their 75th anniversary of their church. So I want to make sure that I mention that because we did proclaim the week of Sept, or the day of September 24th is New Era Missionary Baptist Church Day in the city of Fairhope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Hello, mayor. Stephanie Dernan, 209 Hemlock Drive in Fairhope, Alabama. I'd like to continue the conversation that was started last week about the inappropriate materials in our libraries. I know y'all have had a couple of weeks to discuss that amongst yourselves, but I'd like to give you a personal story about why I no longer use the library that I paid taxes for and travel all the way to Robertsdale to use them. Two years ago in May, I brought my children to go to the library and as we were walking around, the displays on top of the teens shelves were so abhorrent and so vulgar, I took pictures of them, three just little pictures, and left with my children. I've copied those out and printed them out today for you from two years ago and included the information about those books. When there's a million other topics that are available out there, I just don't see a need to highlight certain topics and certain books available to our children. Sex and drugs and things like that should be kept on the shelves far in the back or down the hall in the adult section, but I'd like to give you each of these pictures if you don't mind.
Thank you, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. What am I looking for now?
What am I looking for?
If you look, you know, when you have time to flip through the description of these books in the back, you know, again, there's so many other things that we can be highlighting for our children instead of something like this. And hopefully, one day, I'll be able to return back to my city library without fear of my children being exposed to something so blatantly, so out in the open, on top of the shelves with flags in them. And I'd like y'all to take a really close look as a city council about the employees or your funding. I know Mr. Conyers is the city liaison, and I think a lot of us would have appreciated some type of verbiage from you, Mr. Conyers, last week as the city liaison to the library. If you have any questions about those pictures I took in May of 2021, I'd be happy to answer them.
Specifically, ma'am, which, what are we looking for here?
These are pictures of the books that were on display in the children's and teen, well, teens section in May of 2021, with flags noted in the top of the spine, and then the description in each section afterward, afterwards, in the packet of the ones that I could find. And it shows the content. Each of those books that are included in that packet have content warnings, and there's some really disturbing things in there.
Council, any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jonah Elliott. I'm a sophomore at Bay Shore Christian. I spoke here last week. And first, I'd like to start off by thanking you guys for being here again. It's great to be able to have civic leaders that want to fulfill roles in our community. So something I took interest in last week was that a lot of our arguments seemed to get misstated by our opposition. So a really common one was that we were in violation of the First Amendment because we wanted to ban the books that were in the teens section. So I don't think that that was really the argument that any of us were making because we simply wanted them moved into the adult section because of the content that they had in them. So if a parent, for some reason, wanted to check one of these books out and then bring it home to their children, they could still do that because the book wasn't banned. It's still in the library. It's just moved into a position where it's less accessible by minors and children. So obviously, due to the pornographic nature of those books, I believe that that would be the correct move to make here. But that was, I just found concern at that because our arguments were being misrepresented. So that's all I have to say. But once again, thank you guys for being here. I appreciate you guys doing all this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wendy Pickering. I'm from Orange Beach. And I was just coming up here. I'm also a private investigator, and I've had a lot of concerned parents out of Fairhope, out of Baldwin County especially, but a lot of them out of Fairhope had reached out to me for me to look at a couple of books that they were concerned with. So just to give you a little bit of background on me, I specialize in social media investigations and digital footprints. In the past two years, I've become involved in child trafficking. So I've got a little bit of background in some of those things. So one of the main books that they sent me was It's Perfectly Normal, and it is at the Fairhope Library, and it is available to the youth. After looking at the book, reading, reading some of the book and comparing it with the Protect Act of 2003 where there, there's, which is the federal law about child pornography, it absolutely, and there's almost zero doubt in my mind, that this book, this one particular one, several of them are, but this one is the only one I'm going to talk about, this is child pornography. But I'm actually sending on Wednesday a report to the FBI. I've already contacted KIV's office. I was already told that they are taking this very seriously. I'm just needing to know, do y'all provide funding for the library? You do. Do you think it might be wise that you look at this book, you read this book, and you look at the law? This law right here, that is a federal law, which is why I'm contacting the FBI over this. And I have friends that are in the FBI. I showed them the pictures. It's obviously, it's obviously child porn. There is no question about it. Are you concerned that you may be funding this? I need to know, because if you weren't aware of it, now you are aware of it. From this point on, if you do not do something to protect those kids, it has, there's pictures of masturbation. I, I, I find it hard to believe that I have to even, would even be asked to come up here because it's obvious what this is. You've had time to review the books. I don't know that maybe you're not concerned about it? You're using taxpayer money to fund something that does appear to be illegal. And I just wanted you to know so that you would understand why I'm doing the things that I'm doing. You also need to look at, you're the liaison? Yeah, how about you close the library for a few days, get those books down until KIV and them are able to figure out what we need to do with this situation, because it doesn't look good. This is a serious situation, okay? We're talking about the mental health of our children. I'm not talking about LGBTQ. I was on the phone with Prism today with Corey out of Prism. He is very concerned. He agreed with what I talked about, that this is absolute child pornography. This is somebody with Prism. So Prism is not pushing this agenda. Now, he, Prism has not given an official word on it, but I'm telling you right now, somebody's pushing a very bad agenda. They're trying, they may try to make it look like I don't know who, but this is child pornography. If you are aware that it's in there, you're aware that children are getting it, you need to do something about it, like now. You've had weeks. Thank you for your time.
May I ask you a question? Ma'am, will you come back up? Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My mic, I don't think it's turned up. So let me ask you a question. If, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, but if you're an adult and you're in possession of child pornography, that's criminal, right?
It is.
So would it make sense for that to be in the library at all? Or, I mean, if it's in the adult section, does that make it legal? Or does it make it illegal for an adult?
It is illegal to be in the library at all. It is also illegal for the people that have checked it out. I have, I have the write-up that I'm giving to the FBI about the reasons that I have had to view some of the content. And I would also, if you don't mind, anybody that has checked these books out, if you're doing it to protect the kids and you're keeping them out of the library, get them back to the library. Do not keep them checked out because you're going to have some explaining to do also. So if you've checked them out, get them back into the library.
Would that, would that not also apply to the publisher and distributors of these books also?
Absolutely, and they are being reported also.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? All right, hearing no one. I will close public participation. Next item on the agenda is executive session, and I'll read the letter I have here. It says, "As city attorney, I am Marcus C. McDowell. I hereby request the city council go into executive session based on Alabama Code, Section 3625A, 7A3, to discuss imminent potential and pending litigation. As city attorney, I hereby request that the city council, the City of Fairhope rise from regular city council meeting on Monday, September 25th, 2023, to go into executive session. The city council shall be in executive session for approximately 45 minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council shall return to the city council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting." I'll entertain a motion...
I'm moved to go into executive session. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I got four horsemen in here. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
God bless you guys.
Meeting is adjourned.